All right, so it's 6:35. I'd like to call to order the Joint School Committee Meeting representing Dover, Sherburne, and the region at 6:35 PM here on, what is it today? The 24th of April. First item on the agenda is the community comments. I don't know if there are any comments from anybody or if there's anybody else online.
Nobody answered them.
Any other comments? All right. So today we're here at the MEKO headquarters here in Boston, and the hospitality's been great from the entire community here. And I think we're doing this, one, to show support for an incredibly important initiative that is near and dear to our entire district's heart here, and demonstrate the investment we have in that program. So that'll be kind of interwoven through some of the stuff that we're talking about tonight, and certainly into a lot of the programming and other things that we do as a district over the course of the next number of years. The first item on the agenda after community comments is Superintendent McCoy's update.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming to the MEKO headquarters. First, thanks to Millie, the director, and her staff here at MEKO for hosting us this evening. Thank you to Monique Marshall-Vio, our MEKO director in Dover Sherburne, and Denny Conklin for organizing tonight and getting everything ready for food and for technology, and for our parents and community members who have come to join us this evening. It's great to have you. Thank you for being here. Just a few updates. We have not been far apart. April 2nd, we were together, and then we had a vacation in there. So just a few things to update you on. Myself, Dawn Fattori, Sean McGee, the Director of Facilities, both police chiefs and our school resource officers have done walkthroughs of all four buildings based on feedback that we've gotten from staff and from drills this year, lockdown drills, fire drills. And as you know, coming out of negotiations last year with the Educators Association, each building now has an emergency-based team who meet regularly. So based on all of the feedback and all of the findings we've had this year, went through just to talk about some concerns that have been raised and how best to address them so we can address them quickly and move forward. So that's been a huge success, and we'll keep you posted as anything comes up that will need to be funded or supported through your work. And two weeks ago, we had a MEKO advocacy day. Needham hosted it, and it was an opportunity by MEKO Region for us to go and speak with senators and representatives and talk about the importance of the MEKO program. And it was absolutely touching to hear students, parents, alumni, parent liaisons talk about the importance of the MEKO program, leaders, and how we need to make sure that the Massachusetts Legislature continues to support this program because it does so much for all of our students from Sherburne, from Dover, and from Boston. The Challenge Success Survey results are in. As you know, our middle school and high school students took the Challenge Success Survey again. They take it every four years. And we are just looking at the preliminary results. We met with the Challenge Success Steering Committee yesterday and went over the middle school results. We're going tomorrow over the high school results, and then we'll be culminating that together in a presentation to share with you and the larger community about sleep, about homework, about stress, and the movement that our district has made in the last 10 years to dialing down the temperature and making sure that we're still meeting the needs of all students, supporting their social-emotional health, and continuing the academic rigor that our district's known for. So more to come on that. We are in hiring season, which is very exciting. Denny, I'm going to thank him for organizing many of our job fair visits. John Smith, the high school headmaster, went to the Massachusetts Partnership for Diversity in Education job there and showed Dover Sherburne well, represented Dover Sherburne well, and collected lots of resumes. Denny, Tim O'Meara from the high school and Rob Williamson from the high school went to the Mark job there last week and collected lots and lots of resumes. So lots of promising candidates there. Those resumes have been passed along to our principals, who are now working with their hiring committees to bring teams together and find the best and the brightest for our students. I met with the first candidate today who's finally made it to Central Office, and it's a social studies candidate for the high school, and he's just such a breath of fresh air and so wonderful and is so in line with our vision and our values. I can't wait for him to join our team. So it just gets more and more exciting from here on out as we start to join and welcome new members to our community, of course, with some tears as we say goodbye to those who are either retiring or moving on. But bittersweet anyways, it's a great restart. Administratively, in terms of hires, I believe you all know that Allison Gullingshaw was made permanent principal at Pine Hill School, which left in the opening as assistant principal. They did a full search, thanks to Denny. Jen Ryan, who was a former teacher, former literacy coach, is going to be the assistant principal at Pine Hill. And so that's open to a coaching position, and Denny and the Pine Hill team are looking for coaches there. And our Director of IT position is posted as well. So we have lots of resumes coming in. We are putting in a little extra spin on it now, where it's not only going to be the hardware and running the technology infrastructure, but also having that educational vision and working with our school-based teams to make sure that we're infusing technology into the classroom more regularly. So we're looking for them to actually have a DESI license, which is exciting. And then the Sherburne budget passed last night, so two of our schools will open. I don't know, we'll have to decide if it's going to be the middle or high school, but Pine Hill and one of those will open next year, and then hopefully after next week, the other two can open as well. But it was a great showing of support from our community to be there last night and to engage in a very long conversation about all that matters in Sherburne. So good news. And other than that, given our space, I thought it'd be a great opportunity to talk about our participation in the MEKO 2.0 initiative. Denny has been our point person as we are one of four districts, four out of 33 districts that were chosen to be leaders in looking at the MEKO 2.0 blueprint and finding a path forward in how we can take our strategic plan and our DEI work and combine that with a vision of MEKO and kind of merge to make sure that we're all moving in the same direction. So I'm going to turn it over to Denny to talk about the work he's been doing with his team and how that's going to be incorporated into the work we do as a district.
So we started this work, I think, in January. So the members of the Dover Sherburne team are myself, Monique Marshall-Vio, the MEKO director, our middle school special education coordinator, Jen Meek, our high school special ed coordinator, Tori Sulser, and then Jen Ryan, who will be the assistant principal at Pine Hill. So we have been meeting at kind of sometimes twice a month meetings with our two coaches that work with us, so Dr. Darnisa Monte Jackson and Dr. Lee Title. And we've been having sessions with the other three schools, and we've also been having individual sessions just with the Dover Sherburne group. I have to say, this is what a nice way for all of these areas, kind of the special ed piece of it, the MEKO piece of it, the teaching and learning piece of it, to all connect. One of the things that we've been doing in our small group time is we had been thinking about the Student Opportunity Act plans that you all voted on at last month's meeting, and this gave us the perfect opportunity to look at the data, so to be looking at our subgroups and our low-income students, our African-American, our Black students, and our students with disabilities. And we had, because of this group that assembled, we got to have some really good rich conversations. So when I presented the Student Opportunity Act to you all, it didn't feel like it was just an exercise in bureaucracy. It felt a lot more meaningful for us. And I think the people that were part of this MEKO 2.0 group were really well-positioned to talk about, you know, how do we realistically begin to close some of these achievement gaps in our subgroups? A lot of our conversations recently have been about how we're going to bring this MEKO 2.0 vision to Dover Sherburne, some ideas that we've been bouncing around. You know, we've been thinking about restorative practices, and our assistant principals received professional development on those this year through a MEKO grant. How do we continue to expand out restorative practices to other staff members, BCBAs, counselors, you know, who are the people that are next in line that need to be trained? We've been thinking about work that we can do as a district leadership team, so Central Office and all the building leaders. So Hingham is another one of the districts, and they recommended a book to us that just gives a lot of different scenarios around diversity, equity, and inclusion, because sometimes it's hard to talk about the problems in your own district, but when you go out and talk about a scenario, you can have richer conversations and it doesn't feel so personal. So we've been looking into bringing those scenarios into our leadership team meeting. And I think for next year, we've had a lot of conversations about how do we educate the larger Dover Sherburne community about MEKO? Its history, its role now, and that's not just for our community members, that's for our students, and that's for our staff. We had a really good opportunity in our new teacher orientation this year where we got a presentation on MEKO, and the mentors that were there said, "We wish we had had this," because not all of us know the full story, which is around the room here, of why MEKO is what it is today. You know, people will say, you know, "Why do we continue to have this program that's transporting kids from Boston?" So we think that next year, we'll be really well-positioned to hopefully do some more events with our staff, with our students. We actually have a group of elementary school teachers right now that are working together between the two buildings, Pine Hill and Chicagoring, to put together some lessons just to, so that the kids can know about MEKO, and they hear Boston students, they can understand what this means. And then, you know, we would love to get our staff, you know, on the bus ride from Dover Sherburne into Boston so they can have a firsthand experience about what it's really like to ride the bus twice a day, bring them into the communities that our students live in so they can begin to see where our Boston students are coming from. So these are just some of the ideas we've begun to float around for how DS feeds into that MEKO 2.0 work for next year.
Thank you. And Denny won't tell you this himself, but as the person who writes the grants, the Student Opportunity Act grant, which you all approved at your last meeting, and how that fed into his conversations with this MEKO 2.0 group in terms of looking at gaps that perhaps we need to close. As you know, DESI is a large bureaucratic organization, and for those of you who work in other fields other than education, you know more about workflows than I do. But things go in and they go to person, 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 and then back to us. They don't often have time to provide compliments, but Denny did get an email from DESI saying that the work of the data analysis that he and his team did for our students was the best they've ever seen.
Great, thank you.
So that's it? I was happy to take questions or feedback.
Sounds like Denny's going to got a lot more work to do.
I appreciate that because I know many people in the community have asked about data, and it makes me feel great to know that we have the best data analytics team in all of the Commonwealth, and I believe that. Yeah, I believe that.
Other questions on Superintendent McCoy? On the hiring?
Denny, I think you said, and I'm so sorry, my hearing's not great, it's not the audio, but Denny, I think you said that there was a book that was suggested reading. Is that something that you could share with the group? I'd love to.
Yes, definitely. I have to go back, it's in my office, but I can provide that information.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
On the hiring, roughly how many roles are currently open, and are there any that you guys have concern about fielding qualified candidates or that it's going to be trickier than you'd expect?
Nope. Well, the data analysts can pull up the exact number, but maybe the general, which is, we have, you know, roughly three or four positions per school, and we've gotten a lot of interest and a lot of strong candidates. So not yet, and we're still early in the process, which is great. We purposely put out our postings right after February vacation so that we'd be the first out there, and we could grab the best and the brightest and diverse candidates we can, and so far it's working.
All right. I think I understand that the town of Dover co-opted our HR person?
Yes.
So do we have a plan to hire again for that, and where is that in this workflow, to use your word?
It's a good question. So right now, one of the plans is to create a flowchart of HR responsibilities, because as we have learned, bringing in a full-time HR person into a machine that needed to be oiled and fixed, it was an extra cook in the kitchen that actually created a little bit more work instead of fixing it, created a little bit more squeaks and wheels. So I think, having lived through this year with some pretty challenging personnel issues that have all been resolved and ended up in a positive place, the expertise that we need is not in the workflow, and it's not in the day-to-day, but it's really when there are conflicts among employees or concerns about employee performance that we need help that isn't quite at the attorney level, because we can certainly call the attorney, and we always do, but might be at someone who has that HR background. So the recommendation that we're kind of chewing on at the Central Office level right now within our executive team is perhaps, instead of having a full-time person, having someone that we pay just to have on retainer that I can call at any point without feeling guilty and use their expertise. Because to have them in, you know, a day a week or three mornings a week, that's probably not when things are going to happen, when I need them. So that's our current thinking, but still to be finalized.
Does that mean you need additional staff to kind of deal with the administrivia, or you think that current team members and staffing can handle the?
I think current team members and staffing can handle it. Our HR person, who is lovely and wonderful, who's now working entirely on the Dover town side, will be able to take some of the work that our Central Office is doing to support the Chicagoring employees away from us, which will help lighten the load a little bit in our Central Office. So we're going to try that and see how it goes. We'll keep you posted.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions? All right, cool. Thank you for the update. Next on the agenda is the Superintendent Evaluation. I'll turn that over to Maggie, I think, to give an update.
Sure. So Judy Miller and I are going to make this presentation tonight on behalf of the whole Evaluation Subcommittee, which included Kristen Aberley from Sherburne, Glace Sapard from Dover, and Judy and myself. And that's just how, because of the being the three districts, how we organize the administration of the evaluation process, having one representative from each of the local school committees, and then one from each Dover and Sherburne from the region. So we, as we talked about last month when we met as a joint group, have collected, used the state's DESI rubric and collected data from all of you. And really, our role is to compile the data and then to act as, you know, really wordsmiths. We don't create the information, we take the comments and the things that people have done and kind of compile it into something that makes sense and can be an evaluation that we can all get behind. Can we move through, I'm sorry about the slides. So in Massachusetts, the Superintendent Evaluation process is a little unique compared to other places in America because it's entirely a public process. So if you think about any job you have, the idea of having to sit in front of your boss and get your feedback for the, you know, the annual summary on public TV is a little weird. That's how it is in Massachusetts, so we kind of, we do it. And that's what we're doing tonight. So the state has a recommended process they would like us to use, and that's how we do it. And it's based on sort of a cycle that happens over the course of the year. So if we start at like 12 o'clock, it starts with the superintendent doing their own, and it mirrors the process that all educators in Massachusetts use. So whether it's teacher, whether it's a principal, or an assistant superintendent, this cyclical process is the same for pretty much, you know, maybe different criteria, but for all educators in Massachusetts. The year starts usually, this is a one-year process. It can, for superintendents, after their first three years, be something that we or the committees decide to stretch over two years. But for the first three years of a superintendency, it's a yearly process. Where it starts in the fall with, the superintendent produces a self-assessment, where they're at, looking at the criteria in all of the rubrics with the different areas of knowledge, and shares that information along with an analysis, and does their own personal goal-setting as well as district goal-setting and what their goals and plans are for the year. We did that in the fall. Beth shared that with us. We approved the goals, both on behalf of her personally and then also in terms of the district, which was also rolled into the district teaching plan. The year goes on. Earlier in the year, we did a check-in, a very brief check-in. Beth shared with us sort of where she was on the goals. That's the formative assessment, and then tonight we do the summative assessment. It's a lot of steps for one year and a lot of kind of big lofty goals, so sometimes that process is a little bit challenging in terms of like how far have we gone, but you'll kind of see as we go in, it works out, and the expectation is, in most cases, the goals are not going to change every year, or they're going to evolve, or maybe the metrics for what's successful will change, but hopefully it's all kind of rolled back into the plan and kind of lasts over a few years, so we can go to the next thing. So in the superintendent rating process, we were given sort of what should the ratings be. So in terms of, we look at each of the goals that were set by Superintendent McCoy for herself, for student goals, and for the district, and we rate them on a scale of exceeded, met, made significant progress towards, some progress or no progress. Similarly, we are asked to rate on all the standards of superintendency, professionalism and management and operations, and instructional leadership, and family and community engagement, and that is rated on a scale that exemplary, proficient, needs improvement, and unsatisfactory. And one thing that's important to note, because like me, I'm an old lady, I look at that and I'm like, oh, A, B, C, D, right? That's not how this works. So proficient is what is expected. Like proficient is good, proficient is an A. With DESI, exemplary really is reserved for when a professional has a performance that is so high-level that it really is serving, could or is serving as a model for leaders regionally or statewide. At the end of the exemplary in this rubric, which is like, I have a copy over there, I think, it's like 20 pages long, the last sentence in all the exemplary says, "And does this as a model for other educators." So just keeping that in mind, that is not a situation where if you don't get all exemplaries, you're not doing an excellent job. That's not the case. So moving on. So we met, just to catch everybody up if you were not with us last month, last month, and we talked about the process, we talked about the forums, we distributed those to everybody. Everyone works individually on their own forums, and then we collect them, and the collective evaluation is really a compilation of everybody's, you know, feedback. And so we use kind of an averaging system. We do like assign numbers and then kind of put it together, but then we also look at it like qualitatively, like, you know, we're, you know, if it's a three and a half, like we're, most of the checkmarks in proficient, and it usually is, it's not a complicated mathematical process. And I can say, and I'm going to turn it over to Judy in a minute, this is a situation where there's a very high level of consensus in the 16 members of this department in looking at these three committees, in looking at this evaluation. Some years, you know, we've been doing this for a long time, some years that's not the case. Some years you have different members who feel strongly in different ways or have a lot of emotions about leadership at this level, and that is not what we observed this year when we looked. There is a very strong, really largely unanimous collaboration, you know, what is the word? Everyone's on the same page. Correlation, thank you, between the members of the district about the result of this evaluation process. And so tonight, we're going to share with Superintendent McCoy, with all of our members and with the public, the results of this data.
All right. So now, we're going to, yeah, we're going to sort of go through and kind of read into the record in a sense what the evaluation is, because that's in Massachusetts our process. And just a note on the goals section, as we do in DS, our goals are pretty high-level, and so they may not be as quantitative and measurable and also sort of time-bound for a one-year slice. And that's, I think, that's a good thing, but it also makes it more difficult in evaluating. So even though all of these are met, there may be pieces of them that are still, you know, goals as opposed to things that, you know, activities, you know, to distinguish them. So I'm going to just read this into the record. So the student learning goals, which we have rated the Superintendent McCoy as met, is A, in order to increase student engagement and foster deep learning, I will, Superintendent McCoy will support educators in further utilizing student-centered, inquiry-based, skills-focused instruction. And B, identify a comprehensive set of data points to monitor student, school, and district growth relative to established goals and benchmarks. The next one is also met with, was it even in terms of?
It was a little bit more split between the two groups. It landed more solidly in met, but there were numerous people who wanted to say significant progress. And really, the commentary around that was, it's just, how do we know this is done? And also, some of the things that will make this goal be finished is getting the platforms and practices in and then also analyzing whether or not they've been effective. So it's not that we're not, nobody thought it wasn't being addressed. Some people thought it was all set, and some people were like, no, you can't really say that yet, because some of the things aren't in place.
Yeah, and that's, and that is the issue of, does it, can it happen in a single year? Okay, so professional practice goal, streamline platforms and practices to ensure timely, effective systems of communication between home and school. So let's go to the next slide. These are the district improvement calls, and everyone rated this as met. Establish a shared vision for teaching and learning that engages students as active learners in the development of skills depicted in the Dover Sherburne Portrait of a Graduate. Nurture a positive school culture and strong sense of belonging as a means to improve academic and social-emotional outcomes for all students. And third, refine communication strategies relative to district goals and practices as a means to increase transparency and build trust with families and the community. All right. So now we're going to go on to the Superintendent Performance Ratings, and you can see the ratings here, although professional cultures, there were some exemplary. But do you want to start, then Maggie, with the standard one?
Sure. So we'll kind of go through and do the commentary and analysis.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do you want to save the overall for the end?
Oh, that's a good idea.
We could just do that at the end. We'll roll down. That's just something you're.
Yeah, that's the beginning, that's the first word.
Yes, that would put that whole slide up, right.
Yeah, so let's, yeah, let's just read that in, and let's do the.
Okay. So for standard one, which was around instructional leadership, where we rated that as proficient, there were, there were three areas, three subsections, because each of the four standards has like multiple, multiple subsections that members can rate or not rate depending on the amount of data that they've received from the superintendent. Last month, she was able to give us a huge amount of the data and the extra evidence to back up what the evaluations were. And the three areas of focus were ensuring that all instructional staff design effective and rigorous units of instruction consisting of well-structured lessons, ensuring that all practices in all settings reflect high expectations regarding content and quality and effort, engage all students and are personalized to accommodate diverse learning styles, needs, interests, and levels of readiness, and then ensures effective and timely supervision and evaluation of all staff in alignment with state regulations and contracts. There were other ones that were not focused on, but the overall commentary on that area was that we found it was proficient, and we'll just read into the record the evaluation commentary. Superintendent McCoy's background and experience as an instructional leader means that she always keeps her focus on the primacy of student experience and performance in her work. She models the importance of this standard in her own reflective nature and willingness to learn before and while making important decisions for the districts in the area of curriculum and instruction. Over the course of the year, Superintendent McCoy provided multiple key pieces of evidence that support her work in this area. She has led and supported multiple curriculum reviews, conducted classroom observations and walkthroughs with members of the administrative team, has supported professional development for supervisors on effective observation, and worked with Assistant Superintendent Conklin to identify nine high-leverage best practices that support district goals around student learning and that are observable in all classrooms K to 12. The recent adoption of a new kindergarten through fifth-grade math program is a great example of how the instructional leadership team left no stone unturned as they examined the best way to teach our children so that all students could be both challenged and supported as they mastered important math concepts in alignment with the mass curriculum frameworks. Working together with the Assistant Superintendent McCoy was well-versed in the review process. It was exceptionally thorough, including multiple site visits to districts using all curricula being considered, as well as multiple long-term pilot experiences for teachers in Dover and Sherburne. Feedback was sought from educators, families, students, and building leaders as decisions were made, and a thorough, detailed, and data-driven presentation was shared with the school committees along the way. Moving forward, it will be important to look at the data gleaned from the new district dashboard, data dashboard, and to elicit feedback directly from students and families as this and other new curriculum and teaching methods are revised and implemented at all levels. Instructional leadership is clearly a priority for Superintendent McCoy, and she leads a strong team in her work with Assistant Superintendent Conklin and the instructional leadership teams at each of the schools. leadership teams at each of the schools. So I'll turn it over to you, Judy, for management and operations.
Okay. And under management, operations, everyone rated her proficient, and there were two areas of concentration. First was scheduling and management information systems, uses systems to ensure optimal use of data and time for teaching, and time for teaching, learning, and collaboration, minimizing disruptions and distractions at the school-level staff. And the second one, law, ethics, and policies, understands and complies with state and federal laws and mandates, school committee policies, collective bargaining agreements, and ethical guidelines. And the summation of the comments are, Superintendent McCoy, over the course of the past year, has had multiple opportunities to demonstrate her strong management skills. Members have mentioned that her ability to lead bold progress, to lead bold progress and manage the day-to-day operations of the district is inspiring. For example, quote, "She has managed to do this even while gracefully juggling an increase in public records requests which have challenged the district over the past few years. Her work on creating a data dashboard that incorporates multiple sources of data is a big step forward for teachers and administrators, as well as the general public," end quote. Superintendent McCoy is a person with a high degree of integrity. In addition to this, she clearly has a detailed understanding of laws, ethics, and policies related to education. One person has shared that although they admired her can-do attitude, they are concerned about sustainability and do not want to lose her to burnout.
The next standard was family and community engagement, and the focus area for that was that the superintendent actively ensures that all families are welcome member of the classroom and school community and can contribute to the effectiveness of classrooms, schools, and the district and community. And the commentary for that, this was rated as, you know, consistently proficient, and you know, maybe one or two in other ones, but generally, this was very strong, you know, correlated between all the members. Superintendent McCoy has worked tirelessly on transparent communication this year. Members report positive feedback from families regarding her ability to foster a strong school culture where parents feel welcome and where concerns are addressed respectfully and fully. Superintendent McCoy has consistently demonstrated and modeled a diplomatic approach when responding to dissent, disagreement, or critique from members of the community. She is responsive and transparent even when responding to concerns that are based on misinformation. She responds to all inquiries with respect, integrity, and kindness. Superintendent McCoy clearly views parents and caregivers as important partners in the work of sustaining and improving education in the Dover Sherburne Regional School Districts. Superintendent McCoy is consistently responsive to the community and has created numerous public events over the course of this year to educate about the whys behind district goals and priorities, as well as to address concerns that have arisen from various stakeholders along the way. This year's events have offered the community an opportunity to return to the principles of challenge success, academic innovation for 21st century learning, to understanding the district's revised strategic plan, and addressing the community regarding the mathematics curriculum review, elementary curriculum pilots, and new curriculum decisions. The new district's website is up and running. It fits a forward-thinking district better than the old version, and enables families to find what they're looking for more easily and with fewer clicks. Communication within school communities and for families with children in multiple schools is being continuously streamlined, while continuing to offer parents insight into what's happening in schools day-to-day. The new data dashboard app, Parent Square, is going to offer even better systems and transparency for families and community members alike, and the committee members will look forward to seeing how these systems will increase the effectiveness of district communications. Superintendent McCoy is willing to tackle challenging, challenging issues and respond to community concerns in a proactive and professional manner. When community members brought to her attention the need to reconsider the district's holiday schedule to better meet the needs of our multicultural community, she convened a task force that took on this multifaceted, complex issue, and allowed many voices to be heard while continuing to model respect, empathy, and decorum at all times. One concern that has arisen this year is the volume of freedom of information requests being directed at the Dover Sherburne schools. Responding to these requests has been incredibly time-consuming and have strained the capabilities of central office personnel, including Superintendent McCoy. Rather than complain about this challenge, the superintendent has responded to requests with grace and respect, and has used this as an opportunity to create more transparency and to demonstrate the urgency of the need for systems such as the data dashboard. Superintendent McCoy clearly views parents and caregivers as important partners in the work of sustaining and improving education in the Dover Sherburne Regional School Districts.
And the fourth standard is professional culture, and Superintendent McCoy was rated proficient and, and by some, and it was a tie, exemplary in this area. And the two focus areas were communication demonstrates strong interpersonal written and verbal communication skills, and shared vision, successfully and continuously engages all stakeholders in the creation of a shared educational vision in which every student is prepared to succeed in post-secondary education and become a responsible citizen and global contributor. And I want to, I want to emphasize that there is sort of a dual rating of proficient and exemplary in this category. And the comments are, many school committee members have commended Beth's communication skills and improvements in the overall school communications, hold on, through the new website and effective newsletters. There have been many positive comments regarding Beth's exemplary skills in navigating difficult discussions and topics with respect and open, open mind and heart, such as the school calendar task force. For example, student, Superintendent McCoy has excelled in fostering strong communication with the community through various channels, notably newsletters, workshops, and panels. Through meticulously crafted newsletters, she has kept families and stakeholders informed, ensuring transparency and engagement. Her dedication extends beyond mere updates. She has orchestrated workshops aimed at empowering students, equipping them with the skills and knowledge crucial for their future endeavors. Additionally, by organizing, organizing panels featuring experts and professionals, she has provided invaluable insights guiding students towards readiness for the challenges and opportunities ahead. Her proactive approach and commitment to effective communication have undoubtedly enhanced the community's confidence and preparedness for the future. From a cultural proficiency standpoint, it was impressive to see how student, Superintendent McCoy encouraged us to examine the school calendar to see if it was still a good fit for the needs of our students and their religious and cultural celebrations. She encouraged the committee to collect and reflect upon data points from multiple stakeholders and perspectives at all times, even if committee members differed in opinions. Inspired by her tone and leadership, the committee all had respectful dialogue and left meetings with a better understanding and a deeper trust for one another. All right. So that concludes sort of the summative evaluation.
No, we have still like the summative evaluation.
Oh, right, right, right.
Sorry.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I forgot. Go ahead.
Do you want to do it?
No, you do it, you do it.
Okay. So we're going to read the overall, and then if members have their own things that they want to add, we'll open the floor up to that. Okay. So the summative evaluation, and I should say, on the professional culture, which is the one that was proficient exemplary, in all the focuses, it was a great, those were rated exemplary. So I think that's important, like, that's what we said to focus on, and those were really extra, extra strong. Superintendent McCoy has been diligent and deliberate in, yeah, sorry. Superintendent McCoy has been diligent and deliberate in her approach to leadership as the superintendent of our three school districts. She brings an incredible work ethic, sense of integrity, servant leader mentality, and a strategic mind to her work on behalf of our students. She has led through times of heartbreak and loss, challenging issues, and staff changes beyond her control. She has demonstrated a willingness to learn, reflect, and grow in her perspective, and consistently treats all with dignity and respect. While she has only been a superintendent for two years, she has earned the trust and confidence of three school committees and is respected by the faculty and community members alike. One committee member shared this sentiment that summarized the thoughts of many. Quote, "I feel confident that Dover Sherburne will continue to succeed with Superintendent McCoy leading our districts." The superintendent identified a series of ambitious performance goals that encompass student learning, data analysis, student sense of belonging and engagement, increasing positive school culture, and improving the effectiveness and transparency of communication between family and community members and the districts. While many of these goals will take more than a single year to complete, members consistently rated her goals as met or having made significant progress toward. It is clear that Superintendent McCoy is a leader who keeps her goals at the forefront of her work, and that she continues to reflect and refine her actions in order to lead our districts toward those goals. Members noted that Superintendent McCoy has a strong ability to lead for sustained and systemic change. She's led a revision of the district's strategic plan in an inclusive and forward-thinking way. She understands how to build trust, create buy-in, and motivate her team to do the work necessary for our schools to continue to evolve as they provide best-in-class educational opportunities for our students. The thoughtful and careful planning of the math program pilot, evaluation, and changes to the special education leadership structure, and the work integrating diversity, equity, and inclusion throughout our schools are just three examples of concrete evidence of her leadership. Superintendent McCoy has had, unfortunately, multiple opportunities to lead through crisis and tragedy over the past year. She's provided steadfast and unwavering support to grieving families and staff members, and ensured that the community felt seen and cared for during moments of profound loss. During a building lockdown this year, Superintendent McCoy was a steadfast anchor, providing clear and reassuring communication with parents and caregivers, and working with law enforcement to ensure that students and staff were safe and that the incident was investigated and debriefed. There is strong consensus among district, the district committees, that DS is extremely fortunate to have Superintendent McCoy at the helm of our district.
Thank you.
The end.
So now, like-
We have not, so any member, this is our consensus, this is the gleaned from all of your reports, kind of amalgamated in. There are times when members have their own things that they would like read into the record. So this is our time to do that. It will go around if anyone has something. We just ask if you do that, to please forward what you say to Diane following this so that she can have it appended with your name to the evaluation. Judy?
Thank you, Maggie. I'll, I'll start, and it is a bittersweet moment for me, because this is the last time I'll get to do this. But I am pleased to have the opportunity to present my comments on Superintendent McCoy's outstanding performance this school year. In sum, Superintendent McCoy has done a terrific job. She continues to use her intelligence and depth of knowledge to analyze and research every issue that arises in the district, develop strategies and solutions, and present those in a thorough and yet compelling way. In every issue she has tackled this year, including our catified math curriculum review, our exploration of issues of time off for religious holidays, and our continuing DEI work, Superintendent McCoy has leveraged her own deep knowledge and experience and engaged outside experts to provide subject matter expertise which enhances the result for the district. We are truly blessed to have someone at our helm who is so incredibly smart, dedicated, and capable. Second, Superintendent McCoy's ability to communicate with grace, even-handedness, and intelligence, both verbally and in writing, is unsurpassed. The issue of time off for religious holidays was one of the most difficult issues we have considered in my six years on the school committee, as there was no clear right answer for our districts. Superintendent McCoy led this exploration by providing evidence-based information, by providing what evidence-based information was available, reaching out to everyone in the community to solicit questions and opinions, and help to validate, and this is the most important, widely divergent views of staff, students, and families in an understanding and even-handed way. In addition, her day-to-day communication skills are awesome. On a very micro level, she continues to keep our committees in the loop on all issues, great and small, on a real-time basis. Okay. Beth, I have so enjoyed working with you over the last six years, and I will miss you. It is apparent that you love this work. It is your calling, and you are surely one of the best in the business. We are blessed. Well done.
Thank you.
Would you go once?
Thank you. I have had the benefit of working with Beth McCoy for the past four years, and once again, I have had no problem giving her a glowing evaluation, especially considering the ample evidence we were presented with. But I'd like to add an extra statement of gratitude for her humility, grace under fire, and for keeping our children's well-being and education at the top of her priorities list while also conserving taxpayers' money, sometimes a seemingly impossible task. Like school districts across the country, DS has been navigating an alarming increase in FOIA requests. Beth and her team have diligently worked to both fulfill these requests and to decrease the need for them by one of many, by a list of many things, including publishing more robust district and school newsletters, committing community forums, offering extensive office hours, presenting district data and progress towards goals in the state of the district, distributing the annual district report, and the creation of a public-facing data dashboard to be rolled out soon. We are fortunate to have leaders who react to scrutiny by becoming more transparent, not less, with the intention of also paying, saving both taxpayer dollars and our district leadership's valuable time and energy. Thank you, Superintendent McCoy, for your ongoing dedication to our educational community, and please know that we are all in your debt.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Great. There's been chatter about whether we vote this in or not.
I think we have to vote to accept it, to move it forward, yes.
Okay. And we will vote by, by committee?
Yes. Do you guys want to go first, because you have to also be a vote call?
Yep. So we'll do Sherburne first, like a motion from the Sherburne School Committee to accept the entirety of Superintendent McCoy's evaluation into the formal record.
Christine Walsh, so moved.
Thank you, Christine. Any second?
Becca Hammond, seconded.
Thank you, Becca. Any discussion? No? Okay. Those in favor, Becca Hammond?
Ah, yes. Becca Hammond, yes.
Christine Walsh?
Christine Walsh, yes.
Great. And Dennis Quant, yes. Do you have a reading?
May I have a motion to accept the evaluation that was read into our record tonight in its entirety?
Mark Hilly, so moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Colleen Burke.
Thank you, Colleen. All in favor? It's unanimous.
Great. And Flor?
May I have a motion to accept the evaluation as presented tonight by the subcommittee?
Martha Castle, so moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Yes, you go.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously.
Great. Thank you. That was great. Thank you for all the work.
Yeah, thank you.
It was a lot.
Can I say, thank Maggie? Maggie did the lion's share of the work and does a spectacular job at it.
Thank you. And Goldie feels terrible that she could not join us tonight. She had a previous plan, but also, you know, it was-
Maggie did the lion's share of the work and does a spectacular job at it.
Thank you. And Goli feels terrible that she could not join us tonight. She had a previous date, but also, you know, it was a team effort. You know, we, it's more of a, it's a housekeeping task. Everyone, and this was, I was so grateful, everyone wrote such wonderful, thoughtful, eloquent things. It was more like, you know, when you can like make notes for a paper, you can piece together people's really thoughtful things into hopefully something that makes some There was, it was a pleasure to do the work. I think that we've been very fortunate. And, you know, I, for one, having been in the area of education, it's really hard. You don't get, you only, you rarely get the good feedback, right? Like every day, people call you when they have a problem, because that, like, I wouldn't bother you if I didn't have a problem, right? But like, that can get hard. You know, we're not in a business where you get a big bonus at the end of the year or, you know, there's not a lot of awards. And to be able to read your whole collective three committees and the examples that they shared, that some of them related to things that you'd shared with us, and some of them were just the experiences that they'd observed, was an enormous, like a privilege, and I really appreciate it. And Judy said it better than I, but I've been sitting here for seven years with you in different capacities, and this is my last year, and I'm really, really going to miss it. So it's been such a gift to be able to be part of this organization and to support this work. Thank you.
A chief problem solver.
Say something?
Of course.
I just want to say thank you, because I know individually, you all had to sit with the 20-page document, which is, for those who don't live in the world of education, there's a learning curve that goes with this. So thank you for taking time out of your professional and personal lives to do that, and especially to the subcommittee, Maggie, for taking 16 different 20-page documents and synthesizing that. And I know that's not easy. I too am going to miss Judy and Maggie. Liz and Amanda, moving forward, actually, Denny and I drove in together. We were talking about having a way in about how next year will be great but different. And so thank you for all of your service. You will be best. I also today got, timing is everything, as a superintendent, all new superintendents in their first three years have their teams evaluate them, and it goes through the NSI, the NCIP program. So today I got my NCIP feedback, and it evaluates both the functionality of the 16-person leadership team as well as myself as a superintendent. So it's double information in one day. So on the way here, for 45 minutes, Denny got to listen to me process that information, and then on the way home, Denny, you're going to get to listen to me process this evaluation. But I really appreciate all of the positive feedback, and, you know, to your point, Maggie, we don't often get to hear the positive things. It's very overwhelming to hear a lot of positive things at one time, so it's very awkward to sit here.
Have it in writing. Write it.
Thank you.
Chop it up into little poster notes and post it around your house.
I will. Maybe sound bites where I can press buttons. But thank you. And I'm always open to constructive feedback, too, for those of you who know me well. I'm my own worst critic, so I'm going to continue to refine and set goals for myself and hopefully continue to do better by our students in Dover Sherburne and Boston. I'm looking forward to setting new goals next year, continuing some, tweaking them a little bit, and working with our school committees moving forward and my leadership team. So thank you.
Don't be overwhelmed. This is an incredible amount of data that we've been analyzing, and I think we have a row of people here that are very well-versed in sort of expectations and also have incredibly high expectations of what this role has. So we know that you can't do it without your crew, and you can't do it without sort of that ecosystem that exists in the buildings within our district. So I think this is as much a testament about the hard work that you've done as well as the ecosystem that everybody has leaned into. So thank you. Denny will talk about therapy after the ride home. But, good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last item is consent agenda. That was included in the package, which just includes the minutes from the April 2nd, I believe, meeting. Any questions, comments, edits, adjustments? No? All right. We will do that again by committee. I will go first. So for the Sherburne School Committee, like a motion to approve the consent agenda for the meeting minutes for the April 2nd meeting.
Christine Walsh, so moved.
Thank you, Christine. Second?
Becca Hammond, second.
Great. Thank you. Any discussion? No? Becca Hammond?
Becca Hammond, yes.
Great. Christine Walsh?
Christine Walsh, yes.
Great. And Dennis Quant, yes. Judy?
Oh, just staring up in his face. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Are you sure? I'm so moved.
May I have a second?
Please, hold on a second.
All in favor? Passes unanimously.
Thank you. And for Dover?
Dover, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Martha Castle, so moved.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously.
Great. Any other business that anybody wants to bring up? No? All right. Once again, thank you to the Metco folks for hosting us here, and the hospitality's been great. I think it's a good testament to the partnership that we have with that team, and I'm looking forward to hearing about all the good work in Metco 2.0. I am signing off as well for the last time here at the joint meeting. So I will call it at 7:30 this evening if we can get a roll call vote, or not roll call.
No.
Right?
By, what is it?
Unanimous consent. Yeah. All in favor? Yep. Okay.
Thank you.
We're going to have a brief dinner.